What do you think is the best solution to the rising cost of rail project? Here's an answer.
I don't know if that looks familiar. That's the header for this brochure. And it was the top of an eight-page glossy brochure the city distributed throughout the island in mid-2008. Its goal was to convince everyone not that familiar with what was going on at Honolulu, Hawaii, that the term "rail" was the same as steel wheels on steel rails. It was a piece of propaganda aimed at voter support in November that year. The point is that the city's effort in 2008 was deliberately deceptive and attempted to arbitrarily eliminate other technologies accepted by the FDA as rail. There were several forms of rail the city knew it. However, I'm not sure the voters were aware how they were being manipulated. In fact, some people locally believe that FDA will not support automated guideway for monorail systems, so let me disprove that.
The reason Maglev, I don't think, advanced is there was no one here pitching it and selling it. Nobody's gonna make a buck off it because it's the right thing to do for the taxpayer.
So it's being done. It's just not being done here. There's no reason why we can't do this. This is America. There's no reason why the future of travel should lie somewhere else beyond our borders.
Why is it hard saving Honolulu a ton of money by using 21st-century technology versus 19th-century steel and steel rail, which is gonna drive the city bankrupt?
Maglev transportation is the transport system of the future available today. Maglev trains are high-speed trains using powerful electromagnets. Maglev is short for magnetic levitation, which means that these trains will float over a guideway using the basic principles of magnetism.
The latest project is Russia.
Apparently an entrepreneurship, utilizing the Maglev technology, by the way, which is in Japan, South Korea, just had a symposium this past week. It's in Germany, in China. There's actually more builders of Maglev than this steel wheel on steel rail, the three bidders. We've got Sumin, Tomo, Bombardier, and... It was Anshado. So there's actually more in the business of magnetic levitation, but the city dismissed it, saying it's proprietary. You can only get one-stop shop with Japan. And that's just not truthful information. This proves it. This shows something that would be better for our environment, our landscape in Honolulu if I could play.
Cities have begun to explore magnetic levitation as a realistic urban transportation option. A Maglev vehicle can maneuver through buildings above crowded city streets and through public parks.
Two-foot pillar, did I mention?
I'm sure I've seen that before, that many. Yeah, it's pretty high-tech.
21st-century technology, American-made.
So how long?
There's no reason why the future of travel should lie somewhere else beyond our borders.
This is Brazil. Their universities marketing this to the world. Brazil's new Maglev. The company said they want...
Now, I know that this vision has its cricks. There is those who say high-speed rail is a fantasy. But its success around the world says otherwise.
Thirty billion dollars.
It's experimental magnetic levitation train. Maglev on Thursday for the first time in two years, and after nearly doubling the length of the test tracks to 42.8 kilometers long, floating on powerful superconducting magnets eight seconds.
Jim Powell, he's inventor of the Maglev 2000. It is a train that goes really fast and doesn't touch the track.
It clears the track about that much.
Okay, now, this is not sci-fi. These types of trains are in use around the world right now.
Yes, Gordon Dambly and I invented them in 1966. And right after we published our papers, we had people come from Japan, Germany, and all over the world. And they started their development programs, which are now operating in a number of countries.
Okay, and no offense to you at all, Jim, but I mean, it's 43 years later. Why are we suddenly talking about why magnetically-levitated trains might be a good idea? Why is America so far behind the rail curve? Powell and Dambly supporters are more skeptical about why Maglev has failed.
Railroads don't wanna change, their lives, special interests certainly. Kimmel Hill with this technology.
And finally, Beijing plans to introduce Chinese-made Maglev trains to ease urban traffic congestion.
What if we get Canadian company, Italian company, a Japanese company for steel wheel? We could have five bidders on Maglev. More competition, more competition. Better bang for our buck, and a watch. 21st-century technology. So the Americans build this.
The world's second urban Maglev train, Agobe. It still needs to prove itself to be safe. For two years since 2009, the Korea Institute of Machinery and Materials conducted the toughest performance test for trying to have passengers onboard. Urban-type Maglev train is also planned for construction in Haejeon, the Japkan city for the year 2020. With the rise of global interest on Maglev trains, Korea's own technology is expected to make a noticeable headway.
Federal government gives funds for this, and it was disqualified because it was called proprietary. It is not proprietary. If more proprietary South Korea could be getting their technology from Japan, Germany could be getting their technology from Japan, China could be getting their technology from Japan, United States could be getting their technology from Japan. That's not truthful statement. That is a deception on the taxpayer that the only solution is steel wheel and steel rail. And I just wanna hail Mary to your council members.
Two types of notable Maglev technology. EDS used by the Japanese and EMS used by the Germans.
Maglev trains can reach a speed of up to 500 kilometers an hour, but trains in Beijing will travel at 80 to 100 kilometers an hour for passenger safety. The committee says Maglevs are big improvement over subways and light rail.
We have a better way to do this, Chair members, we really do. And it won't be a waste of taxpayers' dollars. It will be a savings.
Now, all of you know, this is not some fanciful pie-in-the-sky vision of the future. It is now. It is happening right now. It's been happening for decades. The problem is, it's been happening elsewhere, not here.
I'm Tony Morris, and I'm President and CEO of American Maglev. We work with George Powell, and they call it Project Copperfield because the vehicle levitated like David Copperfield.
There's no reason why we can't do this.
I'm gonna begin from XYZ ninety million-ish in the 20 mile bound to three times that amount. How would you justify that to the taxpayer in your expertise?
Government has a tendency to test all everything, and once the project is trapped, and once the taxpayers are trapped.
When the vote came up, imagine if on the ballot said, "Do you want Maglev?" I'm sure we probably have the same results. If the vote said, "Do you want monorail?", we probably still have the same results. The fact that it said steel wheel and steel rail and nothing else trapped us. It backed us into a corner.
There is no accountability of them going a thousandfold because taxpayers are trapped.
Florida is putting in a major Maglev, urban Maglev system for one-tenth the price of this rail. Honolulu could save a ton of money. They're building a fixed guideway. They haven't put any rail on it. You could convert that to a Maglev system and save everybody a ton of money.
Here's a look at how the proposal stack up. Anshado has the lowest design-build price, but adding in operations and maintenance brings the total cost of the contract to 1.3 billion dollars.
Their design-build price is significantly lower, both ourselves and one of the other competitors. So you've got a very low design-build price and a very high operations and maintenance price.
That's actually soundless steel wheel, but it needs to be.
To lay the rail, it does not kill the rail. It's gonna save taxpayers billions of dollars and a lot of hearings, as you've heard in testimony. A lot of hearings.
The advantage of the Kiss Transport System, or Kiss tape, is short. Because of its shape, it's capable of speeds, excessive speeds presently achieved using Maglev technology.
I've seen members poll after poll. The majority has changed their mind.
That's why Councilmember Tom Burke says he introduced a measure to put rail back under the Department of Transportation Services.
So what are we afraid of? This resolution doesn't stop the rail.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
I have another question, Chair. Many people would say the train has left the station already, and particularly from the council and the mayor's office. But can you explain to us why you think, in addition to the people being outraged over the 1.7 billion dollar this project's gonna cost as of right now, and probably 5 billion dollars, it's gonna cost more five years from now, what makes you think that we can revisit this in for an alternative technology?
The federal government has a rule to a full funding grant. Our grant agreement of 1.55 billion dollars will not let us reduce, to save money, the number of stations from 21 to 20, from 20 miles to 19 miles. That's in stone. You can't switch it from another technology to bus rapid transit. I'm purporting, according to emails that I've been sending you guys, this has been going on for four years. The federal government has a mechanism for any recipient of a full funding grant agreement to what's called petition and amend the full funding grant agreement. When you have a fiscal crisis, is what we are in today. So long as the technology is rail, we can have, the FDA has classified as rail, monorail, Maglev, and rubber tire concrete. The reason we can't have rubber tire concrete is because our state legislature made that illegal. Because anything that leaves the guideway and uses the surface street of a technology has been deemed illegal according to Act 247, why session loss 2005. Whereby the only solution that I'm purporting to have an answer here for you is, no one here can answer the question. Before asking the government for more money or taxing us, have they, our heart, the authority, Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation, or your elected officials, or the mayor, or a congressional delegation, has anybody picked up the phone and asked the Federal Transit Administration, "Maybe petition." Because the video's purpose is, monorail, or Maglev, is a two-foot pillar. It's not a carstole puncher. And what you see currently up is a lot of cost in noise mitigation that Maglev doesn't have. You have three-to-four-foot cement wall for the whole 20 miles that you don't have with Maglev. It's a lot of cement. And the pillar at an eight-foot volume of a column, reduced to a two-foot pillar with a Maglev system, is a savings in cement. That reduction over billion-plus dollars will put us under the 5.2 billion. I am in communication and have no party into this of at least 10 providers who wanna come to Honolulu and tell the taxpayer, "We can save it, and if you folks, we merely ask your elected officials to have a hearing." So we know that we've exhausted every possible means. I'm embarrassed that we have four council members going to Washington DC to admit our mistake. And I know that we should at least exhaust everything in whole. That's our due diligence to our neighbors in the other 49 states, that we don't ask them to forfeit highway funds for us. And because I'm embarrassed of that move and the breach of possibly doing bonds and other mechanisms, which is a violation of the city charter, please, everyone, in this presentation, consider following. Until you can tell me or tell each other that we have no right to amend the full funding grant agreement, go home tonight and ask yourself this. If you believe that, you will always ever have steel wheel on those tracks as long as that guideway's up, until it crumbles, because you'll have to return the money if you change that 100 years from now to anything else. That's what you're being told. If you believe that, then President Obama's 8 billion package and 5 billion package to tear up old steel wheel rail, put in Maglev. I have nobody else to tell you. It's out there. The mechanism is there. Ask your elected officials to come before this microphone and tell you in writing that the Federal Transit Administration will not let you get a more affordable rail product off the shelf because we are getting the most expensive one on the planet that you can buy in the history of steel wheel rail. We have many options to follow.
Board members, any questions? Board members, may?
Mr. Burke, I just wanna thank you for your presentation. I think it's absolutely outrageous that we're not doing that. I was wondering what we can do tonight to help move this forward and try to redeem all of the ridiculousness that's happening.
Mr. Kofalskius, if I'll deliver it to him and Mr. Councilmember and Chair of Transportation Committee, Joey Manahan. If the two of them would merely collaborate and answer your question, if it's put in minutes, can we amend it? Now, I've been pretty good thus far at calling him names. But there's somebody extremely slick and slippery. And if you can track it down, it makes over 300 grand a year. Ask him to answer the question, and we'll all be better off.
Mr. Burke, have you worked with your elected officials in your community, and what is the result?
You saw some footage of November of 2011. And three council members said in that hearing, "We had no right to ask the federal government to use one rail product for another." And since that date, I've been asking. I've called, emailed everybody over and over. I called Angela Gates, who we have today, sent her two emails over the weekend. No one, even when I worked for you, no one would pick up the phone. I'd say Rogers would pick up the phone, I would turn email. One time to answer this, I actually called and asked the staff that works together to get in the office. And every staff member came in there, and I said, "You're gonna witness something." I'm gonna get on the phone and call system, I'm gonna call the FDA regional office, and you're gonna all be my witness. And I got an answering machine and said, "I've had it. This is the 15th call to you guys. You won't answer and return the call." Which leads me to believe there's a sleight of hand going on here, folks. Let's find out a little bit more. Because it's so simple what I'm asking. Our councilwoman won't respond, their aides won't respond, no one will respond to the question. Do you have a right to go to the cash register and tell the cashier, "I can't afford this anymore"? If you think government has the right to tell you that there's no returns, all sales final, I don't know what that America is. Because the America I know it, we have the right, we own the cash register. If we wanna return product, you just gotta ask. Stand-up people, let's ask.
Have you been working with the opponents of this rail system?
All persons. I've been trying to work with people who want this rail to succeed. That's why I'm here. I want it to succeed because you can't take it down. I don't want all these phallic symbols sticking up out of here.
Any other questions on the board?
I have got a question in regards to UH students benefiting and the Y and I coast benefiting. The spurs that will come on in later phases to UH and then the spur to Y and I is recommended by Hanamoto. Hana Miyamoto. For instance, and that Y and I spur recommended going over slash through the landfill, which requires the grade, the rail to go at grade, both there as well as UH. How is heart overcoming the fact that steel on steel can't go up a grade over a certain percentage?
The truth has come out. The technology called 21st-century technology can't go up the hill. You have it here. Somebody told you. Can't use what you're getting. Can't that 5.2, 7, 9, whatever they're gonna put out on price day. Won't work for you Y and I. Why on earth would you folks on Y and I wanna support a project only 5% physically up and give in the other 95% knowing it will never serve your community? It can't make it up the hill. First of all, at 11 miles as proposed with no stops qualifies as high-speed rail. So if you want the monies from President Obama of 13 billion, it's sunset rather in 2014, but they're still available. Congress is really excited, many are for one town in America to get the 21st century to the rest of the world because it looks like Orlando, as Mr. Bonn had brought up. If I could say this quickly, 13 miles, eight stations, fully fixed elevated guideway like ours, 400 million dollars. Anybody freaking? Ah, they got it for free. Don't write away acquisition. Ours is a totality 300 million. Tack on 300 million to the 13-mile guideway. 700 million, 13 miles, Maglev, American technology. Your city and county told you it didn't exist.
And if I can say, Chair, the authors rather than inventors, I'm so proud of this. In 1966, I have autographed book from the inventors of Maglev. I'm shaking, touching the book. Because I've been working very hard for all of us as volunteers. There's a crime going on, and I'm not the only one. There are many companies, many good Americans who wanna advance and save Honolulu. And again, 10 people that I'm not making a buck off of, I couldn't care less other than they're saying, "Burke, can we come to Honolulu and give you a better product?" And I'm here to say, let's give the answer, please.
Thank you. Let's take some questions, board members, within the local community.
I wanted to, based on what we heard, make a motion. A motion to the Chair that this board asked, or the Chair asked, that the Transportation Committee Chair, Joey Mannahan, provide a presentation, or coordinate a presentation on alternative rail technologies for the benefit of the administration and the people.
To come and present at this board?
No, we practice a public presentation at their convenience downtown.
Okay. I think deciding to go in transportation, your community?
I'm just making a motion now. I don't need to put it in committee. I just need a second.
It's your second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? See that? Go, go.
Do we need to ask the public for input, or are we good to go on now? Also for the benefit of Chair, I've rewritten a potential letter that you can submit to Councilmember Mannahan on this request.
I'll take a look at it. So we're gonna continue going up to the community for the... Okay. We're taking this up to the community to reach speed. Please, some further...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also concerned about the rail. And we all should be, right? But we're not, unfortunately. But let's put it this way. If we have to have a rail, and I can't tell the mayor and everybody else, it's mine. Real simple. We get rid of this thing called TOD, which is gonna be most of the 19 proposed stations that we're gonna have there. Now, we went through an original plan, which was to diviate the cars on the road. As you see with University of Hawaii, not in concession, we have a lot of room on the road. The intent was to go from Fenchel, we have a couple days to UH Manoa. So if we, we can probably need 8 stations, one in every district. We'd be riding what they call an express bus through town, over to school. But they're not gonna do that. They're gonna make TOD. And yet, it's gonna cost us taxpayers because when they throw those bombs, we, the taxpayers, are gonna be pulling up and... That's not fair to us. But as Mr. Burke said, many of us brought up concerns. We even asked a simple question. What's gonna happen if we have another earthquake and the power goes on? They say they're gonna provide their own. And if you keep up with it, they're just gonna start getting involved with Hawaiian Electric now? Yeah? What's gonna happen when we have all the lines full with, or all the cars full with people, and we have, and the power failure? Well, they say, "No worries. We'll have the fire department come over there with all of their ladders and take these people off on the rail." You know how much more costs us? Every time we don't have power failure, every time something goes wrong. It's gonna cost us, you know? To me, I think like the guy said before, you know, because we have a pool slot, it doesn't mean nothing. We can break them down and save them. And this came from the Department of Transportation, the breakdown. I think we should, you know, we should look into it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
As you all know, I have not been supporter of the rail from the very beginning. For one simple reason. Panos Pavaratos teaches engineering at the University of Hawaii. And that brilliant man told us time and time again, 19th-century technology to meet 21st-century needs is obsolete. And he was sidelined, marginalized, ridiculed. And his wisdom and his expertise was intentionally ignored because very powerful players had the city council in the back. And if you're going to stand still for this boondoggle that is a get-rich-scheme to profit very few people, then you deserve it. I've been complaining, complaining, making this issue of being anti-rail, that it doesn't meet our 21st-century needs. And we have yet to have a proper hearing, as we should, as Tom has suggested. We need to bring this out into the open and find out why we are not being given an affordable option that is doable with either Maglev or any other means of technology that is available today. Why must we be saddled with this tax burden for my life, the rest of my life, and future generations? It is a crime. We'd better put an end to it soon before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Sorry, Alex Greenwald.
Anyway, I agree with Tom. I mean, we've got it. I mean, you're looking at downsizing, you're looking at all these other options that's coming to us. And yet, we need to find ways to chip in to make our living cheaper. And if we have that opportunity, then we should. And thank you, Al. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Ken Koiki. Thank you so much, Tom, for providing this information to our community. And hopefully, it will help us understand another option that we have. The rail was presented, if I'm not mistaken, Madam Chair, to relieve our traffic congestion for particularly people in our community here on the west side that have to get up like at 4:00 AM in order to just go and work on time in town or to go to school at the university. Unfortunately, as we've all come to find, the current rail is being presented to us not as a solution to our traffic. It's a bunch of tunnels that we clear to us to be solved much cheaper using hot lanes and just reversing traffic using buses and so on. So we're not gonna get an alleviation of our traffic issues. And the backup from the H2 merge, Middle Street, is actually getting worse. So if this debacle, which we now realize is just about building real estate around the stations for urban planning, is going to move forward. If we have another option to bring up the cost from the 5.1 billion that our children, not to mention our assets, it's gonna extend to our kids and probably their kids. We're trying to think any of us are looking forward to it. If we can lessen that cost, as Tom says, we can save money off of this project for its cost and get actually better technology that would serve our children and perhaps their kids in the future. How can we not consider this? How can we not consider this? How can we not request for more information? And again, I'm so proud that this is coming out of YNI as usual, that we have always thought outside the box.
Thank you very much. That was the last speaker. So we need to take a one speaker. Thank you.
Tom, I've been listening to what you've been saying and reading your emails and I have only one question. Is there a time limit that the city council, the local municipal decision has before this can not be changed?
That's a two-part question, very quickly. No matter how the FDA answers, the email that I've sent you and everyone else can have, there is, again, the rules and it's chapter five. After a full funding grant agreement has even been executed, you can get out. Especially if you can prove fraudulent behavior in the interim, how you got there, will be easily out of this contract. Saw that problem. But the point is, is that I forgot to tell everyone here, especially this community, is that Maglev can revert to EV that steel wheel can't because it can make sharp turns that steel wheel can't. And if you haven't fit, the steel wheel plows on through after destroying all the groundwater in the cars, you know, like, that when they get into town, the noise is gonna be the biggest factor. And when people realize that like airplanes and airports, you never left, you never gotta keep doing windows and noise mitigation till forever is? Steel wheel rail is so much louder than monorail Maglev, that that has a value of the savings you can't quantify, members. You can't put a price on noise. Why wouldn't you want something in Honolulu above places in paradise, something quiet? Begs the question.
Thank you. Okay, Jim?
Hi, Madam Chair. Richard Manford, Transportation Committee for Neighbor Report 36. Tom, I'd like to invite you to my meetings, which is the Thursday, November 1. And pre-year, whatever you have. I wanna try to address it because I have the, I have the rail on my agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Okay, once again, February 3, 2015, a letter to Transportation Chair of the City Council, Manahan. We need to take a motion to... Okay, Mr. Fitz, if we could repeat your motion?
That the Chair submits to the Transportation Committee member, Joey Manahan, a request for a public presentation on rail alternatives available to Honolulu, city and county hub of Honolulu.
Thank you. And there was a second. Although, if they were to say, "Aye, aye," any objections? Or should pass? It's a very...
Thank you.